I can.
You give the invocation.
I can do that.
Please rise.
Let us pray. Father, we ask your blessings to be in our meeting today and give us insight, wisdom, God, sound judgment. And Lord, we pray God for the storm that's come and pray your hand upon everybody that's preparing in your protection, in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Robert and Serby?
Here.
Barbara Barnes Buchanan?
Here.
Russ Swin?
Here.
Chairman Carlander?
Here.
Richard Donnelly?
Here.
Roger Brunswick?
Here.
James Worser? The agenda, I'm going to change a little bit. We have with us Councilman Fred Forbes from the City Council. We're going to talk about, just for a minute or two, about our upcoming workshop. And he's going to, he's been leading the effort. I've been working with him and it's been a great experience thus far and we hope we're going to have a great workshop. Councilman Forbes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As you well know, this workshop that's planned, it is going to come off and it's going to be a real good one. What we're trying to do is to make sure that we have inputs from everybody on the zoning board, everyone from City Council. And also, we're going to ask for inputs, and we are already asking for inputs, from LPA, because they're kind of in the fringe of zoning. You might look at their, the starting block, the comp plan, and they also have a lot to do with approving of the land development code changes. Anyway, it's really important that we get from you responses on any of the questions we ask you. Like, at the last City Council, I mean, I ask them, based on what you know today, what are your two biggest things you dislike the most about the current zoning process? And what are the two things you like the best? And there was some responses from several of them, including myself, Councilman Grumbaugh, and also Flynn. It's important that we hear from you all. I know I have my two I dislike the most, but I think once we have a better idea of what you all are unhappy about, what council is unhappy about, what they're most interested in, then we can target this zoning workshop to be much more on target with the interests of the various people that have mentioned what they'd like and dislike. No guarantee that things you dislike will get changed, but there's a good chance it will. You know, it takes four votes to tango, you know. So, anyway, that's my main thing I want to say. I do want to say that I've been working, I think I've had now either three or four meetings with Larry, and I think that it's going to be good and I believe that he representing the interests and communicating on a day-to-day with me for the zoning board will make this even a better success. And I think that, I look forward to it. I do think it'll tend to be later, for a lot of good reasons. Part of it, we're experiencing high water. We don't know what's going to happen with this hurricane that's coming. But on top of that, we have other things that are pressing and taking the time of our city attorney and special counsel that will be working on this. I would guess this to occur possibly late October, early November, and that's not all bad, because that means there'll be more snowbirds back and that somehow, a lot of the snowbirds have a high percentage of the people that are, what I want to call it, critics of the current processes we have. So, it'll give a chance for their inputs as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Forbes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting?
I make a motion.
Any discussion? Call for a vote.
Robert and Serby?
Yes.
Barbara Barnes Buchanan?
Yes.
Russ Swin?
Yes.
Chairman Carlander?
Yes.
Richard Donnelly?
Yes.
Roger Brunswick?
Yes.
Minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is the public hearing. Public comment comes afterward. That's a misprint there. We do our, so that you can talk about the case and...
Someday. Someday if we satisfy.
Can we proceed with the public hearing?
Yes, sir. I'm going to call. We have one case today, and this is Hidden Lakes Residential Plan Development Rezoning, PD 1735599BOS. It's located at several addresses in Benita Crossings Boulevard, including some places that are not addressed, but its proximity is 28521 and 28471 Benita Crossings Boulevard. It's approximately on the city's border, on the southern border, and US 41. At this time, I'm going to swear in witnesses. Ms. Montgomery, if we could get your people, you have Wayne Arnold...
We have Brent Addison, we have Merrick Spaceball, and we have Greg Martin.
Okay, if, let's go with the three, four of you. And Janet, did you get the names? Okay. Please raise your right hands. Now, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you provide today is the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Arnold, you've been previously tendered as an expert in land use and planning. And Mr. Addison, you've been previously tendered as an expert in civil engineering. Are any of the other applicant witnesses?
He's an expert in Wetland Wildlife College and used to be environmental professional.
Has he ever come up here before?
No.
Okay, so we have your information on file?
Yes.
I apologize.
This is okay.
Maybe a different hairstyle.
This is not an offense.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to have the city's witnesses tendered as experts, and I don't know if Mr. Arline wishes to do any voir dire. Mr. Fegan, Mr. Dolmer, Mr. Sweet, Mr. Kirby, Ms. Goff, Mr. Gibbons, Ms. Genson, and Mr. Smith, if you will all raise your right hands. Do you swear or affirm testimony you provide today is the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Now, Mr. Fegan, Mike Fegan, you've been previously tendered as an expert in land use and planning?
Correct.
And Mr. Dolmer, you have also been tendered as an expert in land use and planning. If you could say yes to the...
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Sweet, you've also been tendered as an expert in land use and planning and also surveying, you're a surveyor by trade.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Kirby, you have been previously tendered as an expert, environmental specialist.
Yes.
Ms. Goff, you have been, you have not been tendered. Are you going to testify in this case? Do you want to have her do her voir dire today?
Yes.
Come on up. For the record, please state your full name.
Tricia Goff.
And please state your position.
I work community development, City of Benita. I'm one of the engineers there.
Okay, and do you have any licenses or...
I'm a certified EIT, hopefully getting my PE soon.
Okay. How many years have you worked over at community development as an engineer in training?
About five years.
Okay, and previous experience before then?
I had worked at a local firm in Fort Myers for about five to six years, Nissen Associates, where I started my internship.
Okay, and where did you graduate from?
Florida Gulf Coast University.
And that's in civil engineering?
Yes, in civil.
Okay. And this is, have you testified before code enforcement or anywhere else?
Nope.
So, if you provide testimony today, this will be your first time testifying?
Correct.
Mr. Arline or Ms. Montgomery, do you have any objections to...
I didn't hear. Are you a PE?
No, I'm not a PE yet.
So, you're an EI?
EI.
Okay.
If she testifies, she will probably be testifying more as a fact witness than as an expert. As far as her opinions, I'm not sure, but she has experience in engineering.
Yes, but it goes to the level of expertise, a PE obviously, no offense, but a PE has more, a higher level of certification and experience.
So, your position is it goes to the weight, not to the admissibility?
Yes, sir. Exactly right.
Correct. So, no objection. So, if she could be tendered as an expert in engineering?
Okay.
Thank you.
So, before we begin, I have a question for council for the applicant. In reviewing the documents that have been submitted to us, I couldn't help but notice that there was no surface water management plan included. I also noticed that you said to us, none is required. I want to point out, policy number of the comprehensive plan of the City of Benita Springs, policy number 9.3.2. The city shall require a post-construction pollution prevention plan. I won't read the whole thing, but I'll read the applicable parts. The plan shall require maintenance, operation, and annual inspection of the surface water management system. A post-construction prevention plan shall be submitted as part of the application for development.
Yes, sir. The application for development is the development order. That's when you have the hard engineering drawings, and the primary responsibility for water quality certification and your surface water management system rests with the South Water Management District. And that application information is submitted to the city. State that you would change, however, because it used to be, people would not issue local permits until the state and federal permits were issued. And that, it can be a condition that you have them, but you can't withhold your developer approval, because they have not yet been issued.
So, the application for development doesn't mean the application, it means the development order?
Sir, if I may?
Please.
Florida Statute Section 166.033 was changed, as Ms. Montgomery pointed out, and the current law, which has been changed a few times, they had to tweak it quite a bit, is that at this point, we do not have a right to obtain the state and federal permitting at this point, which would be what a water management district permit is. It would only be at time of development order, at which point we could then require it. I can provide you a copy of the statute.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
If I can continue going through, because I want to make sure all the witnesses are sworn.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I sometimes forget. And Mr. Smith, you've been previously tendered as an expert in civil engineering. Ms. Genson, you've been, Jacqui Genson, Jacqueline Genson, you've been previously tendered as an expert in land use and planning. Sean Gibbons, you've been previously tendered as an expert in environmental planning. Mr. McMahon, John McMahon, John DePalma, I'm sorry, why did I do that? Have you been to zoning before?
No, I haven't.
Could I have you up here, please? Please state your full name for the record.
John DePalma.
And where are you employed?
McMahon Associates.
And what are you employed as?
I'm a principal manager for Florida Services.
And what is your occupation?
A principal engineering manager.
Okay, and are you a professional engineer by trade?
No, I'm not.
Okay. Are you, do you, what is your training?
My background has been as an EIT, previously in Pennsylvania. I did not get my certification. I worked under professional engineer for 40 years.
And have you worked on a plan for the City of Benita Springs for planning purposes that has been a subject that will be discussed at this hearing today, possibly?
Yes, Ms. Vance.
Okay. And have you testified before?
No, ma'am.
Okay, even at zoning hearings, we've never?
No, ma'am.
So, you may be, this may be your first time also?
Could be.
And have you worked on several, have you worked on other plans before of civil engineering?
Yes, I worked on plans from Maine through Florida over the last 40 years.
Okay. More will come up during the hearing. Does either Ms. Montgomery or Mr. Arline have questions?
I have a couple of questions. Mr. DePalma, so, as a manager, you don't conduct the traffic impact studies?
No, ma'am.
And in regards to the study and question, did your firm do any cost-benefit analysis? Do you have any information on how many people might actually use these roads?
For the Hidden Lakes RPD?
For the quadrant study.
The quadrant study, yes. My office did and our professionals did.
Did a what?
Our professionals examined some of the transportation modeling and transportation impacts on the network of the quadrant plan.
But did you do anything that identified how many people would use the roads and questioned how much they cost?
No, it wasn't a thorough study. It was more or less a conceptual planning tool.
Okay, thank you. Feasibility study? It was...
You could call it a feasibility study. It was a conceptual planning tool for expanding network throughout the area.
Okay, thank you. If we have questions as to the plan, I believe we can ask them the questions as to the plan during it. Let me get any other people in the room. I see you, Mr. Steinmeyer. Let me start on the right and work my way around, so I can keep my memory here. You're not going to testify. If you later decide that you wish to testify, and if I have not sworn you in, just remind me at the front if you have not chosen to be sworn in. No? And, can I have your name?
Lynn Doherty.
Lynn Doherty?
Lynn, like the girl's name. Only I'm not.
Lynn, L-Y-N-H?
Yes.
And Doherty?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
D-A-U-G-H-E-R-T-Y.
I think it might be a benefit. All these gentlemen are here representing Spanish Wells, just so you know.
I figured. So, Mr. Doherty, we have you in, and Mr. Steinmeyer, please raise your right hands. Do you swear firm testimony you provide today is the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, and sir, do you wish to be... Okay. At this time, Ms. Montgomery, you may proceed with your case. I'll leave the microphone here in case somebody needs to get up.
Before we start, I just want to give you a heads up here. Two of our members have to leave at noon for unforeseen reasons. We have a third member who has a 1:00 meeting. So, I would urge you all in your presentations to go to the heart of the matter, so we have a quorum here, so we could vote. We're in danger of losing a quorum here. So, we're scheduled to wrap up at noon, and if we could do that, we'll have a lot of people here.
And I appreciate that, and we'll try to be expedient. Obviously, the applicant has the burden of proof, so that's a concern as well. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
For the record, my name is Neil Montgomery. Just to orient you to the property, it is north of the Collier County line, it is east of US 41, west of Spanish Wells, and south of Benita Beach Road. Just by way of information, this property was originally part of a development of regional impact called the Spring Plaza DRI. It was approved in the early 80s, and so it has been zoned over time as a combination of commercial and residential for decades. Across the street, it is the Woods, was originally the Woods Edge Development of Regional Impact, was also approved for extensive amount of commercial and residential. And as you know, part of the Spring Plaza project was developed, this part was abandoned as part of the DRI because of the fracturing of ownership. This is a transition piece. You obviously are well aware of the intense commercial uses along US 41. You're also well aware of the fact that there's a residential, single-family and multifamily subdivision to the east. So, this parcel transitions from the intense commercial to the residential. This is a map of the zoning, so what you can see here is you see a lot of CC and C-1A and CS. Those are old zoning districts. Those you inherited from the county, and even the county, and probably from 85 on, didn't do a lot of standard zoning districts. So, that tells you how old these zoning districts are, and they've been around a very long time. The CC district allows a very broad array of commercial uses. It is, the CG is the most intense, and that allows light industrial-type uses, but the CC is a very intense commercial category. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Wayne Arnold. But let me just say this, the gentlemen that are here from Spanish Wells, I do appreciate their coming. Mr. Doherty spent a lot of time with Mr. Martin, the applicant, and they have discussed the various issues, because it's challenging. You have their subdivision, you have an epinal easement, you have intense commercial, and you have this parcel, and how to make it so this parcel's compatible with and transitions from the intense commercial to the residential. And I appreciate these gentlemen, the amount of time that they spent, and I know you were, some of you were a little peeved the last time, because we were still trying to work through those things when we, you know, continued the matter, and so I appreciate the community and the staff working through these issues.
Good morning, chairman and board members. I'm Wayne Arnold. I'm a certified planner with QG D Minor and Associates, and I'm here representing the applicant. And I wanted to thank staff very much for the detailed analysis we provided and your indulgence for the continuance last time, because I think it gave us a chance to bring forward a much better product for your consideration. So, I'd like to go through some of the analysis with regard, you've seen the slide, as Neil pointed out, our particular piece of property is about 27.4 acres. It's located in your general commercial, future land use category, which means it could support anything from multifamily residential to general commercial uses, to even light industrial. And as Neil mentioned, we believe this is not only an infill piece of property, but it's a good transitional piece that works very well for the multifamily development that we're proposing in this location. As Neil indicated, we are trying to consolidate some older zoning districts that are conventional zoning districts and, in some cases, as well as a commercial plan development component, into one residential plan development. It lets us bring forward a unified plan, it allows staff to issue some appropriate conditions that they find make this the appropriate use for the site, and I think we're generally in concurrence with the conditions that they've offered in that regard. The site's been previously developed. If you've made a site visit to the site, you'll see that there's been an existing lake that's been constructed, there are some former building pads that have been located on the site. The site's been formally cleared, it's been partially replanted with vegetation, there are drainage ditches on it, there are drainage infrastructure in sight. So, the site's been previously cleared and filled, is my point. So, it's not as if this is a virgin piece of property, but it has been previously partially developed, if you will. Again, this sort of recaps where we are. We're proposing a maximum of 240 dwelling units. By the zoning calculations that we and staff have been through, the site would allow a maximum of 241 dwelling units, and again, we're proposing 240 units. This is the original master plan, and the reason I point this out, we started this project many, many months ago, and right after we filed the amendment, we had a community meeting with the Spanish Wells community at their clubhouse. And the significance of this is, all of the buildings along our eastern tier were proposed to be three-story buildings. And we met with staff, and we met with the applicant. We prepared exhibits such as this that we showed the Spanish Wells community, showing the three-story buildings adjacent to their single-family component in Spanish Wells. Needless to say, some of the folks at Spanish Wells weren't exactly thrilled with this, so they formed a committee, and we were glad to continue dialogue with that committee, in which we had several meetings in addition to that, several phone calls, and the end result of that was what you see today, which is a proposed master plan that along our entire eastern tier, where we abut Spanish Wells, all the buildings are proposed to be two-story maximum height. And that was one of the major concessions that came out of our discussions with them. And just for reference, the existing RM2 zoning that's on the property to the south allows multifamily dwelling units, it allows them to be a maximum of 35 feet in height, because your land development code says that you measure those to the midpoint of the roof line, which means the proposed building heights that we have, and a staff's condition to look at our peak, we're actually less than the maximum that could be there today. So, it's a good compromise. It works for our client to deliver a product that he can deliver and rent and make these, you know, good, good transitional uses, and it also delivers a scaled-down version of a building that makes it more compatible with the neighbors at Spanish Wells. This is a color exhibit. I'm going to flip to the next one. It shows it in the context to the aerial and relating properties. As Neil pointed out, you can see we have a tier of commercial all along our US 41 frontage. This property obviously has an existing lake, it has a recorded conservation easement, and then we're depicting the buildings as we have demonstrated to the Spanish Wells with two-story buildings here. The biggest significant change for us was to get the unit count back where our client needed to make this work. We have two four-story buildings proposed in the northwest portion of the site. And Brent Addison from our office is going to take you through some very detailed cross-sections that we've created and shared with our Spanish Wells neighbors, and talk a little bit more specifically about the actual site plan. We're at a point where this plan has been taken to almost, to Mr. Carlander's point, the development order stage, where we have very detailed engineering calculations and specifications that we can talk to. We haven't submitted that yet, but it's almost ready to go into the door. So, again, the main highlights I would point out here, we have multiple access points to US 41. We have three of them, in fact. This is Woods Edge Parkway that we're familiar with, with the signalized intersection. This would be the proposed main entrance point to our community, with our gated entry located in this vicinity. This is the clubhouse and leasing office for the community. And another highlight I'll point out, and Brent will discuss later, you see these brown buildings along, scattered along our eastern property boundary with Spanish Wells. Those are proposed to be detached garages. The initial three-story building that our client proposed had garages tucked into the building themselves. So, what they've done is taken these and created freestanding garage structures, which, with the back of those placed to the wall that we're going to provide, will have an additional noise attenuation to the neighbors and as well as, you know, cut down on any of the parking surface lighting. And those were strategically placed in areas where we thought we, where we couldn't produce an enhanced landscape area, we could provide the back of garage to provide for some of that additional buffering. So, that's kind of our site plan in a nutshell, if you will. Again, just talking a little bit about the heights, the maximum building height, as your code talks about measurement, is 35 feet, and that's, under your comp plan, that's to the eaves of the building. Under your land development code, it's to the midpoint of the roof. Staff has conditioned us to the peak height of the building, which we're comfortable with. We provided you in your packet, and I have a slide that talks about that. We actually showed you the eve height, the midpoint height, and the peak height for the proposed two-story and the four-story building. So, pretty far along in the planning for the project, and it's the way we're comfortable, and I think staff was comfortable in commenting to the maximum height of the building rather than the midpoint. So, this shows our specific heights, as we're proposing for the two-story building, for instance. The eve height is 21 feet, but the peak height is 38. Your midpoint height is 30, and by your code, the RM2 zoning that's predominant over the site today allows your midpoint to be 35 feet. So, we're showing a five-feet reduction in the midpoint height for the two-story buildings. Now, the four-story buildings, again, those are isolated behind the two-story buildings, if you will, and those heights go to the peak height of 59 feet, but a midpoint height of 51 feet. And those heights are not inconsistent with prior CPD approval on the north end of the project, and we believe those are compatible. And again, Brent has a very detailed cross-section that staff asked us to create, showing what that cross-section looks like from Benita Crossings Drive, as our western boundary, to those four-story buildings. Part of our analysis is to go through the various findings of fact that are in your land development code, to talk about what requirements we have to fulfill to qualify to rezone property in the city. And I know that staff goes through an extensive discussion of this point and these various points in your staff report. I'm not going to spend a ton of time going through them, but I do want to highlight some of these, so that we can get it on the record and understand that we have created finds of fact, in my professional opinion, that we qualify for the rezoning that we're seeking. The first one in this case is consistency with your Benita plan. And in this particular case, it says that multifamily buildings in the general commercial land use category are allowed to go up to 10 dwelling units per acre. The adjusted density that we're proposing is about nine dwelling units per acre, so we're within the density range that your Benita comp plan permits for this property. We believe we comply with all your land development code requirements for qualifying for rezoning. You have several criteria. One of those, for instance, do we meet locational performance criteria? Well, there are none really for a residential plan development, so it's really a not applicable standard. But we did look at that. We're not using an affordable housing density bonus in any kind for this project, which is one of your other criteria. Are we compatible? Again, I've gone through, the biggest compatibility issue that we dealt with was a two-story building along our eastern tier buildings with the two four-story buildings on the northern side. The height that we're proposing for those eastern tier buildings is less than the existing zoning would allow us to build today. So, I think that shows compatibility. One of the other things that... build today. So, I think that shows compatibility. One of the other things that was a large part of our discussion, and it's one of the deviations that Brent will get into further, but the code requires where you have a drive aisle within 125 feet of another residential building that you need to provide an eight-foot-high wall 25 feet from the property line. Well, in this particular case, Spanish Wells actually has a wall easement located on our property. And it has about a six-foot-high wall located in that wall easement. And as part of our proposal, we're proposing to reconstruct the six-foot-high wall as an eight-foot-high wall in the existing easement. So, we still need the deviation because of the separation from property line. But to the neighbor's request and to your code requirement, reconstructing that is an eight-foot-high wall. So, additional compatibility is achieved by providing that wall. One of the other issues specifically is talking about infrastructure and transportation. Unfortunately, Jim Banks, who's our traffic engineer, had to have an emergency surgery last week and can't be with us today. He just was released from the hospital yesterday. But he had prepared a traffic analysis and demonstrated that the proposed trip generation is about 75% less than what you would achieve by having the RM2 zoning and the CPD zoning that's in place today. You have a net reduction of several thousand trips a day. All of this is in your TIS. I adjusted two of the numbers just so it's clear, because his analysis was for 274 dwelling units, and we've reduced that request to 240 units. So, we've made the transportation system even better than we thought it was. Environmentally critical areas, there's only one environmentally sensitive area on the site, and it's already in an encumbered conservation easement. No change to that preserve area is proposed as part of our proposal. This is a long one that's part of your requirements. It talks about the public hearing requirements. I'm not going to go through and read all of that. But it talks about meeting the requirements and our deviations, meeting the public intent and furthering those. And as I mentioned, Brent is going to get into those in greater detail. But we believe that this represents a much more compatible land use than having the ability to put commercial there that we do under your comprehensive plan. This is a good transitional use, as you've heard, and I concur with that. I think staff will tell you they concur too. They are recommending conditions in the form of different development standards, buffers, some modification star deviations, so that it's clear. But that is part of something that is some of the zoning findings that you consider, whether or not those conditions are appropriate. And hopefully you will agree that those, and maybe we'll have some discussion on one or two of those, that we want some clarification. But we believe largely we're in agreement with staff's recommendations. We requested several deviations that Brent's going to go through, but we believe all of those enhance the master plan and help deliver a project that is more compatible than if we were conventional zoning that had no conditions. You must find also that there are public facilities that are available or will be available. We have public utilities available at the site, and there are no anticipated or anticipated deficiencies in your system of any kind that affect our property. One of the other things, you have a definition of compatibility in your comprehensive plan, and it says that's a condition in which land or uses or conditions coexist in proximity in other stable fashion, so that new use or condition negatively impacts the other. And I've discussed that in some detail with regard to the lowering of the building heights along our eastern boundary, the location of an eight-foot-high wall. We've also proposed, and you'll see in our detailed cross-sections, that we've worked with the neighbors to deliver some additional landscaping and some larger landscape islands that were strategically placed with taller vegetation to help block any negative use that at least they perceived they would have, to help make us the better neighbor that we want to be. This is something I looked at, some adjacent multifamily to Spanish Wells. And just for the record, this is your Benita City Line. So, everything south of there is in Collier County. So, this is a multifamily product that's in Sterling Oaks immediately south of and adjacent to. And several of the homes in this area, if you've driven back in Spanish Wells, have a clear view of those, what are two-story buildings, but they're pretty tall two-story buildings. There's more multifamily across US41. There's multifamily component that's part of Spanish Wells. And then, of course, we have standalone rental community that's along the Benita Beach Road and the railroad tracks on the east side of Spanish Wells. The other thing that's interesting to look at is all the adjacent zoning around Spanish Wells that happens to be not only multifamily, but commercial and industrial. The blue is all the commercial zoning that exists today. Purple indicates zoned industrial land, including a research and development park that's in Collier County, as well as another one that's immediately across the street from Spanish Wells in Collier County on Old 41. But you can see the pattern of development. It makes a lot more sense to have some form of buffering between the commercial development along Tamiami Trail in this case, as a transition to the single-family that we abut with our project in, as proposed by Hidden Lakes. We had a few photos, and I apologize, these aren't great. This is, this one is the buildings that are in Sterling Oaks. This is an existing office building that was constructed near there. Another view. This one I put in because you can see the wall that we're talking about replacing. And then this is, again, Sterling Oaks to the south, where our wall terminates today. And then you can see the Sterling Oaks multifamily adjacent to it. As I mentioned, we met one time with the entire Spanish Wells community. We held three lengthy meetings and numerous phone calls with the Spanish Wells community that was appointed by the HOA to talk to us. We had planned on an additional community meeting to be scheduled at their committee's request. We've had many revisions to our site plans that we've looked at over the last several months to bring forward the plan you have today. And just a summary of what we had proposed and changes proposed based on our meetings and input from Spanish Wells was obviously the reduction in the building height, the strategic placement of some of those parking structures. We created detailed cross-sections, which you will see in a moment. We created larger landscape islands to enhance the landscaping. We agreed to provide shielded cutoff lighting in our parking areas at 16-foot maximum height. We provided a gated access to our community. There was concern over security. So, we are a gated community. We've located the proposed trash compactors as far away from Spanish Wells as practical near our clubhouse and entrance. So, it's not only convenient for our guests, but not inconvenient for Spanish Wells. We agreed that the cap of our units would be 240. And again, we agreed to replace the six-foot wall with a new eight-foot-high wall. We produced an agreement. I know there were some correspondence going around late last week. I won't speak to the status of that agreement, but we do have a shell of an agreement in place that will be a legal document at some point, once the attorneys get to chew on the finer points. But these kind of highlight the high points of what will be in agreement with us and our neighbors at Spanish Wells. And we've agreed to have ongoing dialogue with them moving forward. Here was the existing wall detail on your left. And then, we don't know that represents exactly the wall detail that will be built, but that shows you an example of an eight-foot-high landscape wall that is proposed to replace the existing wall, that I think the neighbors can attest better than me. But it's in state of disrepair, and it hasn't been consistently maintained along the 2,000 feet of our common property line. So, in summary, we're consistent with your comprehensive plan. We have no urban service capacity issues. There are no level of service issues. In my professional opinion as a planner, we're compatible with our surrounding property. We work closely with our neighbors to address their requests to the best of our abilities. That still allows us to move forward with the project that allows my client to deliver a quality project and hopefully get a return on his investment. And we've demonstrated that we met all your RPD findings for rezoning in the city. And with that, I'll answer any questions, or happy to turn it over to Mr. Addison and let him walk you through more details of our planning exercise.
Any questions here?
I have just one question regarding the eight-foot wall. Who's going to be responsible for the maintenance of that wall on the Spanish Wells side? Will that be their responsibility? Or?
Today, I believe it contemplates that Spanish Wells would be responsible for their side's maintenance of the wall.
Okay. And the other, just to follow up, drainage. We've had some drainage issues in the city recently.
Yeah, we should have the engineer address the drainage issue if we can. He's more qualified. Not that Wayne can't have an opinion, but I think you'd rather have the engineer's opinion.
Mr. Brunswick, one of the slides that Mr. Addison has to go through, it's a detailed drainage exhibit that talks about how our site will drain and not drain into Spanish Wells.
Good. I'll wait for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a question. Are you prepared, or is someone else going to talk about the deviations that you're requesting?
Brent Addison has a slide. He's going to go through each one of those deviations and talk a little bit more detail about the justifications. If I need to jump in, or if Neil does, we'll certainly do that. But Brent was going to cover that in his presentation.
Thank you.
Yes, I have a question. Wayne, who's been responsible for the maintenance of the existing six-foot wall?
You know, there is a maintenance agreement in place, and I believe it talks about the maintenance being the responsibility of the benefit of the benefiting party of the wall.
Yeah, there is an existing agreement, because there's like an easement agreement. The wall is on the applicant's property. And as part of extending the right for them to put the wall there, obviously there's no development on the applicant's side of that wall. It is currently their responsibility to maintain that wall.
Who's responsibility?
Spanish Wells.
And have they been maintaining it?
I would say the easy answer is not consistently.
And was that an issue that came up at some of your community meetings with them?
We have discussed that. And I know that the HOA would tell you it's their long-term responsibility to take care of that wall. As part of our discussions with them, that was a major issue. You know, wouldn't it be more practical if we worked together to reconstruct a more appropriate wall? And that's where we think we've reached consensus that yes, an eight-foot wall would be more appropriate, and we're willing to pay for it.
Is there someone here representing Spanish Wells also?
Yes, there's three people here.
Are they in a position to speak to the maintenance of the wall that's under the proposed maintenance of Spanish Wells?
I know that Lynn Doherty was sworn to speak, and he's one of the, one of the folks that we've been meeting with for the last several months. So, I'm sure he will be happy to tell you about the maintenance of the wall.
And I don't want there to be any confusion. We're not here to cast any aspersions on anyone about how well the wall has or has not been maintained. Our goal is on a going-forward basis. How's it going to happen? Because we want to make sure both sides are attended properly.
Certainly. And I'm not really familiar with, you know, the existing conditions regardless. So, I was just wondering how it was going to go on in the future and if.
Yeah, I just didn't want, I didn't want everybody to think we were complaining.
And another question. Who's maintaining the conservation easement?
Well, theoretically, the current property owner has the responsibility for maintenance. And I say that because, you know, this property has gone through some various hands of ownership over the past several years. So, I think like many projects that aren't truly developed, the maintenance of some of the obligations have not been met probably to the letter of the law.
And is it still under a condition where they furnish monitoring reports and annual reports? Maybe Mike Kirby knows.
Yeah, I think the answer is, we know it will be when we apply for our environmental resource permit with the district and have a new drainage plan in place and new maintenance obligations with regard to the overall system. It will be Millhouse Development's responsibility going forward to do that.
And I know there was some discussion earlier that there's not a water management plan in the backup material. But does this piece end up getting any water from the east?
I think that's a question that the engineers should address, because that's an engineering question, and the engineer's one that's looked at the surface water management. Mr. Arnold could do it, but he's not as qualified as Mr. Addison.
When you see his exhibit with the nice little squiggly lines on it showing the direction of water, I think it'll be clear.
Okay. And so, the water that's coming from, okay, I guess we'll discuss that when it comes up.
Okay.
A quick question on the garages. Are, how are you going to be able to ensure that property owners of the garages don't have what would be considered noxious or, you know, noisy activities within their garage? I'm assuming they're enclosed.
Yes, the garages are fully enclosed with the garage doors. And Millhouse Development will operate this. It's intended to be a rental community. They'll have rental restrictions that are in place. They're going to have onsite personnel that will be there to maintain and lease facilities and field complaints from anybody who, you know, wants to make them to take care of issues. And I'm pretty sure the restrictions are going to tell you that you can't do maintenance on your vehicles or other activities in your garage.
And are there any storage units associated with those garages?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
I have a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
Let's go back to the wall for a second here. As I understand it, you're not going to build that wall until the other, until the current wall is removed. You don't want two walls present.
That's correct.
So, what happens, explain to us what happens is the project is built, the other wall still exists. And do you have a continuing obligation to replace the wall, or does it cease at some point? How does that work?
Well, what's anticipated now under the draft agreement that we have with the Spanish Wells community is they will be responsible for demolition of the existing wall. We'll be responsible for constructing the new eight-foot-high wall.
I understand that. When will that take place, is my question?
That would occur concurrent with our approval of development order and commencement of construction.
During the development order process.
Absolutely.
Okay. Could you describe for us how the four-story buildings are compatible with the surrounding area?
Sure. Well, first of all, in the general commercial land use category, which we're located in, your comprehensive plan says we're permitted to have a maximum height of 75 feet. So, we're well within your guidelines for that. And in this particular case, the four-story building, I mean, when you think about it, we have other three-story buildings. We have a five-story building across US41. So, you have a lot of variety around the city. And in this case, you'll see when Brent goes into his discussion, we have a cross-section that shows you that even on the side from Benita Crossings Boulevard, we're going to have a landscape buffer garage units again. And then that transitions to the four-story buildings. So, that, again, diminishes the height of those. And then from the Spanish Wells side, those are tucked behind already existing two-story buildings that we're proposing. And then if you're on US41, you're tucked behind one- and two-story commercial buildings.
You mentioned that the density allows for 241 units.
Yes.
But that is because you're taking into account the South Tamiami Trail, a half-easement done there. You get 10 extra units for that. My question is, are we obligated to, is that part of the ordinance? Are we obligated to go with the 241? Or are we obligated to go with 231?
Well, what I would tell you.
And we have discretion to do 241.
What I would tell you is that your land development code permits us to take half of the right-of-way as part of our density calculation. And we've done that on, gosh, many projects that I've worked on over the years in the city of Benita Springs. So, it's not something new. It's just something that the code does permit you to do.
One more question.
Which roads, though? Mr. Kurland said US41.
We have two small appendages that touch US41 for about 50 feet each.
Right. How many garages will you have there?
Go back.
I couldn't tell by our.
Yeah, let's go back to the site plan. I'll be happy to try to count those. Brent, you may know off the top of your head. It's been quite the exercise, because every time we make a plan change, we have to go back and recalibrate the parking to make sure it's dispersed appropriately, so that it's convenient for everybody, plus meets your minimum code requirements. But we have four proposed garages on the south-east side, with two more on the northeast side.
Four garages. How many spots in, is that one spot per garage, or?
Yes, it's one space per garage.
Okay.
For each, each building has six garage parking spaces in it.
And so, each building has how many units?
Six. Oh, each multifamily building?
Yeah.
They vary. He's got varying building types.
But it adds a lot more than six.
Yes, absolutely. But there's a series.
So, where are the people going to park?
We have surface parking in addition to the garage parking that's proposed.
And do you have a diagram? I'm sorry, but the material that was given to me, I couldn't read it. And, you know, it was not clear. And so, I'm asking you these questions because I need help, because mine was all illegible.
Well, the units, the buildings vary in type. I think the last I saw from the architect, there were four different two-story footprints. And that depends on your depiction of whether or not you're going to have studio apartments, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom. So, the footprint changes slightly. But with regard to the parking, we're parking to your code requirement, and we're making up some of that parking in a garage unit that we've placed in order to help provide some additional buffering and barrier to our neighbors.
The answer is, you can't tell me how many garages there are.
Well, how many parking spaces?
How many parking spaces are provided?
That's what we're asked. Total for the entire site?
Right.
Brent can get you that answer. I don't know that answer off the top of my head, but.
We haven't asked for a deviation from the parking, have we?
No.
While he's looking for that, Mr. Arnold. I've got a, we were given a rendering here that has parking, or has garages on the ground floor of a, I guess, call it the two-story building, or is it the three-story, a three-story building? Is this current?
Exhibits that are going to. The exhibits that are gonna, that you're gonna see in Brent's report do not have any underground building parking.
I think we've got an answer coming over here.
Right, what I did was I provided the timeline of the submittals. That was the original proposed elevation, which is explained on the page before. Further on the staff report, you see the revised elevations in which the parking was removed from the building and put separately in the garages. But yes, at one time, that was the working, yes, there you go.
This is the current proposed.
That's current, correct.
That is correct, yep.
But at one time, the other one you were referencing was what was being cast.
So the garages, I expect, just for general knowledge, will be, as a realtor, I ask this, for general knowledge, the garages will be sold separately or rented separately, correct?
They would be, they would be rented separately, yes. Learned a lot about that having a kid in college, that you can pay money to get a garage unit.
Yeah. And we didn't have cars when we were in college.
We need you to speak in the microphone for the, as I don't have the microphone there. We need to make sure everything's on the record, so please speak in the microphone.
I said we didn't have cars when we were in college.
So, you didn't?
No need.
I'm still trying to, we don't have a number of the parking spaces.
Is that correct?
We do.
Can I inquire about that? Let me help, see if I can help. Mr. Arnold, are parking spaces, certain number of spaces required per unit?
Yes, the land development code does have those standards.
And does the land development code also require a certain percentage of guest parking?
Yes, it does.
And does the land development code also require a certain number for the amenity center?
Yes, it does.
And have, we asked for a deviation from the land development code requirements?
No, we're providing parking to code and I think Brent Addison, his presentation, he has the specific number of parking spaces. I just, I was gonna give the larger overview and then Brent was gonna go through some of the details. I know this is one of those cases where we don't just have a bubble plan, we have a very detailed plan, so, and I know that, you know, watched some of your meetings-
We appreciate that very much.
-that you like a lot more detail and this is one of those cases, we can do it, can't always do it, but we're happy to provide that detail today.
Okay, I, let me, Mr. Arnold, if I could follow up on the question regarding compatibility of the height. Originally, were the units much closer to Spanish Wells?
The units that were three-story were slightly closer to Spanish Wells. We, with one of the deviations we're requesting is to allow the lake setback to be reduced slightly so that we can push those buildings even farther away from Spanish Wells. So you'll see that as one of the deviations and that was part of the justification for that.
And earlier you talked about compatibility is a situation where you're not exerting a negative influence on an adjoining property. By locating the four-story buildings in between intensive commercial and separated from Spanish Wells by the two-story buildings and the parking garages, are those four-story buildings gonna exert any kind of negative influence?
In my opinion, they won't be a negative at all. They're actually, as I said before, it's, it's a pretty logical transition between US 41 and these properties. And again, it allows for a building type that's not unheard of. I've been in several zoning cases where the preference was to go from three to four-story buildings, for instance, for a variety of reasons, but in this case, it makes a lot of sense to get our unit count where it needs to be and we believe it's a compatible height for the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Thank you.
Call your next witness.
Brent Addison for the record, civil engineer with Grady Minor. I'm, the project, the engineer on this project will be signing his own plans when it comes through. I'm a licensed engineer in the state of Florida and been practicing for about 14 years. I'm gonna speak to some of your questions that you talked about before that are more specific to the, to the site. Here's a, in order to get it all on the same screen, we've got a break in the page, but the portion to the north is a, is, excuse me, the portion on top of the page is the northern section and the portion on the bottom of the page is the southern section of this property. And as you can see in this plan, you can see the parking spaces delineated in this plan and it's not set in stone right now, but we are gonna, we are gonna provide the parking that's met by the land development code. And we are also in excess at the current time of the parking that will be required, but we'll definitely meet the requirements of that code. So in looking at this plan, our sensitive areas and during the discussion with Spanish Wells, obviously are on this side, so this is, these are the residential lots for Spanish Wells here and here. In the original plan, as was just mentioned, the buildings were actually closer to Spanish Wells on both sides. And we also had more surface parking on this, on this side of, closer to Spanish Wells. As a part of our discussions with them and a part of reduced units and, and less units on this side of the property because of the conversion from three-story to two-story, we were able to actually provide larger landscape islands along this, along this edge, as you can see, so we can provide larger trees and more buffering to their development. As also was mentioned, we added in the single-story garage units to provide buffering between, between the buildings. And the same goes on the south side. On the south side, we were restricted by the lake and I'll mention a deviation in a minute, but that's one of the reasons we requested deviation was to scoot our, our buildings as far back as we could and, and as far away from Spanish Wells as possible. This is a blow-up of the northern section and the relationship between our buildings and the Spanish Wells property. There's landscaping on here for your benefit. I'm not a landscape architect by trade, but this at least shows you what, what our plan is and these will be attached to the zoning, so we will have to adhere to these. Oops, sorry. So there's a landscape buffer required along the eastern side of the property and we're gonna be providing, you know, trees on center as required. There's, there's more specific things, the landscape architect can, you know, can, knows more about it than I do. But we're gonna be providing the larger trees in the islands, like I was talking about, we're gonna be providing shrubs and trees behind the garages. This is actually one of the garages here, which has got one, two, three, four, five, six spaces in the garage. So we're gonna, as the garages are buffers from the development, so we're also gonna be buffering those garages. One of our big restrictions on this side of the property is this dotted line right here, there's a, excuse me, this dotted line, there's a 10-foot FPL easement. There are overhead power lines on this side of the property and so there's restrictions on what can be planted within those easements. And so this was one of our challenges in, in the design. And so as you can see, all the trees that we're proposing to be planted are being planted outside of that easement, but even when you're outside of that easement, FPL has restrictions on the size and type of trees that can be planted, that they recommend adjacent, planted to their, their easement for obvious reasons, for maintenance and the trees growing into the power lines. So within their easement, they restrict us to 14-foot maximum height of trees and then outside of that, we're restricted by things like live oaks or, are one of the biggest ones that, or oak trees that, that are encroached. So, which is why we've actually pushed these oak trees out to the, to the front as far away from those FPL lines as possible. And then the wall in question that we've talked about so much today is actually right there, located within the FPL easement, two and a half feet off of the Spanish Wells property line. So we're also gonna be putting trees and islands across the way, closer to the buildings and then trees in front of the buildings as, to help to buffer this. And this is, again, through conversations with Spanish Wells, this is what we've come up with. Here's a cross-section. These are both on the north end. One is, represents the section as, as you have a garage and then the one on the bottom says, you know, shows you what you, if you don't have a garage. So it's, it is hard to read from here, but on the north side, we have 104 feet from the face of the building to the property line at Spanish Wells. And this is showing you the landscaping that we're proposing to help to buffer that on a side view or a section view, excuse me. And then this down here is one without a garage. So, you know, we tried to locate the, the bigger islands where we don't have the garages to help with the buffering. This is the section of the four-story that was mentioned previously. This one does not have landscaping. There will be landscaping required in this. This was a later section added to the, to the presentation. And so here's the Benita Crossings Boulevard, which is the existing road in front of the project. We have 14 feet where, where the garage is set. You'll have the garage and then parking and drive aisles and then here's the four-story building, which is gonna be at the peak height of just under 59 feet. But as I say, there will be landscaping required in this area here and then throughout the landscape islands and adjacent to the building. This is a cross-section of the south. It's gonna look a lot like the cross-section to the north with the exception of, on this side, we have about 10 less feet. They are, the buildings on the south are slightly closer than the buildings on the north. And, but overall, the sections are gonna look the same. And again, in that section, here's the, here's the existing wall and our plan is to replace that wall in the same location, eight feet tall instead of the roughly six-foot tall that it is right now. I'm gonna talk about it more in the water management portion of this, but just to show you, we've provided, up against the drainage, I know is one of the concerns for the, for the project, and so we're gonna be providing swales and/or berms to keep as much water as possible from going to the neighbors. All of our water will be contained on-site as, as it is required, with the exception of the back slope, which we can't avoid.
Excuse me, is that, is that a garage or is that a two-story building?
That's a garage.
All right.
And the garages, I think, are about 15 feet in height. Here's the list of deviations that we're requesting. The first deviation is from the landscape standards of the land development code to allow the wall within the 15-foot buffer. This is, I'll just read it real quick on the code. Landscape standards, which requires if roads, drives or parking areas are located less than 125 feet from an existing residential subdivision or residential lots, a solid wall or combination berm and solid wall not less than eight foot in height must be constructed not less than 25 feet from the abutting property and landscape with a minimum of five trees, eight shrubs per hundred linear feet. To require landscaping only in these areas within a 25, a 20-foot wide landscape buffer in the east buffer and to retain the existing 15-foot landscape buffer along the southern The wall is gonna, the, the existing wall is there and as we talked about, the deviation is also to get rid of the, the wall so we don't have two walls, one back-to-back where you have an area you can't maintain in between those walls. Deviation number two is for open space to allow indigenous native vegetation, a reduction of .58 acres, plus or minus. The land development code requires that 50% of your open space requirement be retained in, in the indigenous vegetation. However, this site has been developed already as Mr. Arnold alluded to and there is this large conservation easement that's in the middle, so we're, we're asking that that be, meet the requirements of our indigenous vegetation preservation. Number three, the water body setback to allow 20-foot as opposed to the 20, 25-foot required. Again, this was mentioned to push the buildings back as far as we physically can and still get down to the, to the lake at, at the backside of the property. So we were asking for this five-foot reduction for that purpose. The, number four is the preserve setback to allow the 25-foot setback from the preserves. This really is related to the clubhouse and maybe one residential building. This is actually, we've done this deviation several times in, in Benita. One of the concerns, and I think the code might be updated on this one, but one of the concerns is, is fire, fires that happen in preserves. And so what we're, what we do is, as part of the preserve management plan, there will be a fire, there'll be conditions in there to help to prevent fire issues, so there's a certain amount of clearing that happens within the 30-foot defendable space that needs to be required for the, that the fire, fire code asks for. And so we're asking this because the client has actually, the idea is they wanna engage the preserve with their, with their clubhouse and, and provide, they're gonna have possibly seating out there on their pool deck, things like that where, you know, there was a discussion of a butterfly garden, I don't know, but there's, but there's things that they, they believe this is part of, you know, the nature down here and they wanna, they wanna engage that in their development. Number five is for refuse and solid waste disposal facilities to allow reduction in square footage. The land development code requires a certain amount of area of solid waste and so by providing a compactor, you know, and this is typical when we provide a compactor, but they wanna provide a single, a single place for their trash collection on-site and, and having this compactor, the areas don't add up when you do that, so it makes sense. Obviously, the compactor is gonna be able to provide more storage for the waste. I will mention that as a part of our earlier discussions, the compactor was on the other side of the property, closer to Spanish Wells and throughout, as part of our negotiations and, and working with them, we actually went ahead and moved the compactor back to the other side closer to the commercial uses rather than the single-family residential for concerns of noise when they're picking up the trash. Number six is the additional identification signs to allow reduction in the distance between the entry sign and the off-site sign. The land development code requires that you can only have so many signs for your, you're linked to your frontage of your property. It's my understanding that through reading the staff's report that this, this is not required because we do meet the standards. So assuming that we all agree on that at the end of the meeting, then we're okay with withdrawing that, assuming that we still meet those, that we can get the signage that we're proposing. Number seven, plant installation and maintenance standards to allow trees and shrubs in the drainage easement. I can show you this in a, in a drawing in a minute, but there's a drainage easement that exists where the properties to the north drain through this property because all those properties, all the way to Benita Beach Road utilize the same lake that we're gonna be utilizing in one master water management system. And so that easement was originally designed when the Benita Crossings commercial development was permitted and the, that easement is no longer needed because we don't need the dry pretreatment that was required for that commercial use as, as for changing it to a multifamily use. So we're gonna consolidate that into a pipe system now instead of a above-ground dry detention system. And so that space is not needed, but obviously to, to plant the trees that we want to buffer from Spanish Wells, we're gonna need that space. And then on number eight is from the landscape standards to, for a decrease from 15 to five foot for the garage areas only for the, the buffer requirements in the areas, in the most constricted area. We have about five feet between the FPL easement and the garages and typically you have to, for your landscape buffers, you have to provide at least 50% of the area, which would have been seven and a half, seven and a half feet that you would have had to use to plant this area, so we're asking to go to five feet instead, but just for the garage areas. This is the section that we provided to staff. I think one of the, some of the earlier packets had a, a different one. We had made a couple revisions and this was the latest one that we had agreed upon with staff to provide a five-foot more relatively flat area from, before it starts sloping off towards the lake to make sure that that can be maintained. So this is, this is part of that deviation for the lake setback. Part of our earlier discussions with staff was also about the quadrant study. We're in the southeast quadrant of Benita Beach Road and 75, excuse me, Benita Beach Road and 41. We're in the southeast quadrant of Benita Beach Road and 75, excuse me, Benita Beach Road and 41. And this is what was, this shows, the red shows what was conceptually proposed in the quadrant study. And then the green represents your existing road network. So obviously, if the red alignment was imposed on this property, especially for the southern portion of our property, there wouldn't be much left for, for the owner to develop. So in discussions with staff, one of the main concerns and, and traffic patterns is here at, at Woods Edge, where the traffic light is, and trying to get some of that traffic over here to Beach Road and obviously avoid the intersection, which is the, you know, the goal, I believe, of the, my understanding of the quadrant study. So there is an existing road network that already gets over to this portion, and so our property stops right about there. So this is the area that we have influence over. It doesn't actually show it, but you can actually get through the parking lot here. It's not a kind of a well-laid-out road, but there is, there is a connection through here, so vehicles could still get through this way as well. So our, as part of our discussions with staff, we focused on this intersection right here, which will show up, I think it had a later plan. But in order to, the, the goal with, with working with McMahon and your Public Works Group was to try to make the flow across this portion of the road better. And so we looked at a, we provided a alternate design for this intersection to keep wa, keep traffic flowing north and south as opposed to trying to come in on this, on this road. And so we went back and forth a couple times and, and agreed on a, a design that, and, and the owner agreed to provide the land to, to, for the, for the city to be able to construct that, that intersection in the design that we had come up with. So that's it on the quadrant study. And actually, there it is. So this is the alignment. North is up on this plan. And so as you can see, the idea is to try to keep traffic flowing better this way to, for the, to encourage traffic to avoid the intersection of Beach Road and 41. So here's the design, and we also provided the pedestrian connection from our entrance out to 41, which is also things that they're looking for in, in the quadrant study. Here's the water management plan that we came up with. I tried to make it as clear as possible. The red arrows represent, you know, the larger red arrows kind of represent the general direction of the flow across the property, and then the smaller ones would represent the micro drainage, basically, the, within our property. As I mentioned, the water management system actually, this lake actually serves, I believe it's approximately 60 acres. It goes all the way to Beach Road from this side, and some of these, they're either going to connect to the road drainage, the, the out parcels, and then in, into the lake, or it comes across the back from the main properties to the, to the north. Here is where that drainage easement is that I spoke about. And that, so right now, it's a combination of a, of a dry detention area and pipes that convey the water through, and we're not going to change the flow through the, we're going to leave those pipes in place and make sure that that flow continues through as it is today. And then it all drains into the existing lake system. And then there's a control structure here on the south end of the property that goes underneath this existing road and drains into a spreader, spreader swell, which is, allows the, the water to, to basically go completely across the southern property line. And then right here, by design, will actually flow into a catch basin and through Sterling Oaks drainage. So that's how this entire area was intended to design, to drain by design and was permitted by the Water Management District many, many years ago. And all the, all the other commercial out parcels and, including the Benita Crossings commercial project that was here before, that was proposed before, and the original hidden lakes, which look very similar to this, which were all approved through either development order process and a water management district permit. So that's the way they've always intended on draining. Also by design, for the Water Management District permit, we're provided, we're required to retain all the water on-site, so there can't be any, there shouldn't be any drainage entering the Spanish Wells property to the east as it's all intended to drain in this direction, and that's what we'll do through the construction and the development order plans for our project. Again, internally, we're going to have, our water is going to drain into catch basins and pipes, and it all ultimately comes through this way. As a part of the water management, as part of our development order and permitting process, we're going to get a development order, and we'll be working with staff here to make sure that we're meeting the requirements of our approved zoning. And the, we also have to permit through a major modification through the South Florida Water Management District for their permit, which exists, and, and the, the water management system is in place and has been operating for some time. I'm not aware of any deficiencies in this area, flooding that's happened there specifically in this area. So there were pervious and impervious assumptions made with the original permit, and we're, we're going to go and make sure we're meeting all the intent of that original permit. But we don't intend to change the lake, and we don't intend to change the control structures or the general direction of, of flow on here.
Brent, before you move on to building elevations, so in your expert opinion, none of the water from, basically the whole Spring Plaza is directed east into Spanish Wells. Is that correct?
Correct.
So it'll go south through Sterling Oaks and ultimately west?
Yeah, they all, they all meet it on Old 41 as they go through, they all, and they all go through Sterling Oaks. So, but ultimately, yes, they're all going to end up in the Gulf of Mexico. And actually, for my side of things, that's, that's it. The, the next slide is our building elevations. The architect is not here, but I think the owner can probably answer, the applicant, excuse me, can answer any questions about the building elevations, but these are the latest building elevations that we've received. This is the, the two-story product, which would be on the east side of the property, and here is the four-story product. Do you have any questions?
Any questions from?
I had a question concerning the trash compactor.
Yes, sir.
If, if I lived on the, one of the two-story buildings on the far south of the property, and my wife tells me to take out the garbage, do I have to walk all the way to the compactor site?
Yes, and in many instances, we provide.
We need to get you.
I'll let the applicant speak.
Greg Martin with Mel House Development. Yes, in many instances, we provide trash valet where there, we set, you know, small trash cans outside your door. There's five days a week that you can put trash in there, and then we have a service come through, pick those trash cans up, take them all to the compactor and compact them, compact them there. And we also provide recycling at that location.
Where, so as part of the architecture, you're saying?
No, it's part of the operations. So we, whether it would just be a trash can outside of somebody's door, and you put your trash in there and, you know, on a Tuesday morning, and the, the trash valet service comes through and picks that up and then takes it to the front.
Thank you.
Is that on a daily basis? They pick that up?
It, it varies. Depending on the usage of the property, we, we kind of fine-tune it as we get into it to see how much usage there is. But it's usually three to five days a week, depending on the size of the project.
Do you not see a problem if those trash, are those trash containers outside your door enclosed in any way?
Some of them are, and some of them are.
Do you not see a problem for those that aren't, or are, for either case, people overflowing them and having problems with critters, varmints?
No, we, we've not had problems with critters and varmints. It's the same, this is the same services provided that work at Run Apartments down in Naples. In the past, we haven't seen that issue because we have maintenance staff on-site that's making sure that the property is well-kept and that the prop, nobody's, you know, there's a certain period of time that their trash has to be out there. And if it's there longer or more, then we've got maintenance staff that are policing that.
My experience with renters is that they're, they don't treat it as if it's their own home, and they tend to abuse things such as.
It is definitely a management issue. And, and, you know, that's one of the main reasons that we have maintenance staff on-site is to, you know, kind of manage that process for people to make sure that there's no issues that occur from, you know, people do it, and we make sure it gets cleaned up, and we notice them, and they don't do it again, and we have the ability to find them, and so we do have controls within our leases.
I don't know if that's a zoning issue, but it certainly is a management issue.
It is definitely a management issue.
And a concern for the city.
Yeah, and I'll just say, I didn't, I didn't point it out, but there's a, this is where the maintenance building is currently proposed on the site, so there'll be somebody there on staff. And there's also a drop-off area, so as they're leaving the development, they can, they can drop their trash off. And then this is the, the clubhouse, but will also be the leasing office. So that's, staff's going to be on-site. They're going to, they're going to see what's going on, on-site.
A question, where will the vehicles be picking up the trash?
Right here at the compactor. It would be, it's, there's going to be a, a truck that backs up and loads this compactor up and inserts a new one.
I have a couple other questions.
And just the compactor itself, just wanted to point out that there will be, there's a, it's required to be screened, and we're going to have screened out all the wall and gates and landscaping as well.
So will they be opening gates up, getting out of the truck, opening gates up, and then backing a truck in and then exiting and?
Correct.
Okay, so it's kind of standard?
Yes.
Okay, I have another couple of questions. Let's see. Was this ever, was this lake ever part, a borrow pit for US 41 construction?
I don't know the answer to that question, but I don't think so. I think it was constructed as part of this development.
Does anyone know, maybe on staff?
Yeah, remember what I said earlier, this was all part of the Spring Plaza DRI, and so the reason there's the cohesive water management system that Brent just mentioned is because it originally was all part of one project.
So was it, it was used as a borrow pit?
No, it was.
It was a natural lake?
For the project.
No, I mean, it was a, it was an existing lake before the DRI?
No, it was dug as a lake for the DRI, and in fact, it's my understanding, because I abandoned the DRI, so I have some, because part, this part went into foreclosure, which is more than you want to know, and Huntington Bank was the one that did it, but at any rate, they took the fill out of this lake when they did the drainage and put it on the north part before they let it go into foreclosure. So it was a dug lake for fill and for water management.
Okay, and where are the culverts along 41?
With.
Are there, are there culverts along 41?
I'm sure there are under the driveways that, let's see. Find a good slide.
Are you looking for the F dot ones or the Woods Edge DRI?
F dot.
F dot.
I mean, I'm, they have, I'm sure they have culverts under each driveway to keep the water flowing along 41, but we're completely separate from that system.
But, so none of your, none of the drainage would affect any of those, including the one on the very southwestern side?
No, in fact, it, it actually, I've walked it personally, and it stops. And, you know, there's a berm in between us and, and 41, and there's no water flowing in between. There will be a little bit probably in the entrances, but that's existing conditions that we're not going to be changing.
So the outfall for the original DRI is where?
Well, that outfall was negotiated when Huntington Bank took the property over and went through the, the process. Johnson Engineering worked on that at that time.
And it's right.
Huntington for that outfall.
And it's right there.
So all the water actually ends up on Sterling Oaks?
Yes.
Okay, and so now that I, I do know, I've heard that Spanish Wells has a continual problem with their drainage, so none of the Spanish Wells water ends up in this area, is that right?
No, we're, I mean, we're close. We're parallel, but the two are separated by a berm.
So has Sterling Oaks experienced any flooding also, like Spanish Wells?
I don't know the answer to that.
Does staff know? That might be helpful, because I know Spanish Wells seems as if, I, I'm a realtor also, and I've had some listing, I had a listing in Spanish Wells, and the pump was running even when it wasn't a flooding situation in the area. So I was just concerned that we're not creating an additional.
Yeah, I, I will say that, again, this was all, this, this was all designed to work together. The, the portion that Sterling Oaks, because when they developed, they would have had to account for off-site drainage that's flowing through their property, so that's what they did by installing this, you know, showing this, this, where they take the water in.
Right.
So, and, and we're, and again, we're going to be working with South Florida Water Management and, and the city to make sure that we're meeting the requirements and not making it any worse than it is.
Right, and, and I understand that, and I, I know that the plans are, are great, but a lot of times, even some of the methodology and the technology that was used before isn't necessarily functional. Let's see, you were talking about the indigenous deviation. What's actually being, is there something being taken out? That you're looking for a deviation, or you're, what are you looking for?
You can't provide something that's not there. Pardon me? You can't provide something that's not there. The point is that the site's been cleared, they're retaining the indigenous that's there, but it doesn't meet the percentage that's required. So we're just acknowledging existing conditions.
And are there any exotics in the existing conservation easement?
That's probably a Barrett State School question, so we can have Barrett answer that question.
Okay.
I'm Barrett State School with Barrett Pauls Environmental. Yes, ma'am, there are exotics in the conservation easement area. It's under contract with the contractor right now. We went out and got some bids to get that area treated and get the piece back into compliance.
Oh, okay.
And Barrett, there was a question earlier about monitoring. And when a new water management permit is issued, will monitoring of the conservation easement be required?
Yes, ma'am, we'll have a, more than likely a time zero, which is the initial, following anything else that's been done previously, as well as additional five years for monitoring.
So the existing easement agreement will be revised?
Yes, ma'am, we'll have to go through modification with the South Florida Water Management District upon approval of that.
Thank you.
And Barrett, as long as you're up there, the staff indicated that there's no listed species on this site and no anything to be concerned about unique to this property.
Correct, yes, ma'am, nothing like that such.
And that's largely because, as already been testified, this was an impacted site.
Cleared and filled previously before, and there was nothing out there during our site inspections.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Was there, just curious, was there a, a better aerial so you could see the drainage conveyance on the east side of the project? Is there any, there's nothing?
I don't, I don't think, I don't think we're going to get that close. I mean, there is a, there is a ditch, you know, between us and Spanish Wells, on the Spanish Wells property. The wall is actually on the back slope of that ditch, so I guess our sections probably?
There was a cross-section on one of the first slides, the very first slides when you first started presentation.
And the maintenance of that is Spanish Wells or?
Correct.
Yeah, they're responsible for maintaining their water management system.
Back to mine?
Your cross-section.
Well, I had, yeah. So you can, it, it goes further, and we stopped at our property line with the section, but the ditch goes, the swell keeps going and down into their property, and that, that, that is for their drainage only.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
I have a question. In the last 10 days, was there any standing water on the property?
I don't know the answer to that question. I wasn't on-site.
Does anybody know the answer to that question? Sir?
We actually took, Mike Kirby, Senior Environmental Specialist, Community Development. We actually took a drive out and drove around, there was some standing water. So there was, there were little puddles in other areas of standing water.
Were there any standing, was there any standing water in Spanish Wells property?
Yeah, they have a ditch alongside the fence, the concrete wall there, and that was full of water.
By design?
Oh, yeah, I'm sure every rainy season, it fills up with water.
For the, thank you very much, Mr. Kirby. My concern is that as we add impervious surface and take away the ability for the property to maintain water, we're pushing water somewhere else. Is that, I mean, is that a fair statement?
Well, we had, I mean, this was, again, it was all, it's already been permitted, so it's, it's going to happen. There's, the control structure, by, so by the permit, we're required to limit the amount of discharge to a predetermined discharge rate. So it varies from area to area, but we take that rate, and so it's whatever it is, if it's two cubic feet per second, we're going to, the permit is designed, excuse me, the control structure is designed by the permit to maintain that. So there was studies done, and we're going to meet those requirements on that. So the rate would not change.
Let me ask Mr. Addison a follow-up question. Mr. Addison, I know in some locations, I'll use Halfley Creek as an example, it doesn't get cleaned and snagged very often, and then there's problems. So do you have, is maintenance an important factor in making sure water management system works?
Absolutely.
So in this case, the system on the south part of the property has been dormant, and I presume not well-maintained for a period of time.
From observations, yes.
So wouldn't you expect the system to work much better once the site's cleaned up and the system properly maintained?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
One last question. You alluded to dry detention, that it's going to be, that area's being removed, is that right?
The permit requires that if you're, if you have construction, excuse me, commercial development, that you have to do a half inch of dry pretreatment before going into the lake, before it enters the lake. Well, we don't have a commercial use anymore, so we're going to, we don't need the dry detention area by the requirements of the Water Management District. So we're going to eliminate that portion of it. There may be, there's still going to be a swell over there, but we're not using it for a water quality volume.
How large is it right now?
The drainage easement is 40 feet wide. That includes the pipe, and then the slopes up, down. We're going to maintain a portion of that. I think we're still at, it's 20 feet at the narrowest portion.
And are you taking, did you say pipes out, or anything like that?
No, there's an existing pipe there. We're just going to utilize that pipe to, to convey our water as well.
And where is the dry detention on the site plan?
It is currently right here. It's more, I mean, it's mostly outside of the parking area, but on this side of the property, from this point of our property line over to the corner of the conservation easement where it discharges.
And none of the water from the development at Springs Plaza comes in that direction?
It does, it flows through the pipe, it currently flows through the pipe. The detention area was designed specifically for the Benita Crossings Project, which was basically half-built and then not developed. So it was part of that permit, which is what we'll, one of the permits we'll be modifying.
So in your opinion, what makes the difference between the commercial versus the residential, and why we would want to eliminate the dry detention?
Well, it's the type of uses, type of vehicles that will be entering the site with oils. That's the biggest thing for dry detention, is that that half inch is the first flush of runoff that comes off. So, say it hasn't rained in a couple of days, and there's oils on top of the, on top of the pavement, that when you get that first flush, a lot of oils will come off, and then that, that catches that. It catches that first half inch and holds it in there. Now, the lake will also do the same thing. This, that's an additional requirement for the commercial. The lake has the weirs in it, and it also has skimmers that prevent oils from leaving the site. It'll also do that, it's just the dry detention's an extra level.
Okay, so to the north, at Springs Plaza, where you have Jiffy Lube and all of that, do they have their own dry detention up there?
Some of the parcels do.
Oh, they do?
Yes.
Okay, and which parcels would that be?
I don't know specifically, but most of the commercial ones are required to do that. So I, I mean, that's a, like I said, it's a large project, so, but I've seen those areas while I've been out there.
And maybe our staff knows that, too, where the dry detention would be on that particular development, Springs Plaza?
I mean, there's some, there's, there is a, there is a large area in the back behind the old, well, what is Sweet Bay? Or Wind Dixie now, sorry, it's changed, changed a couple of times. But, and then the individual parcels, I've seen, you know, seen them in there, they have their own, each parcel has, has their individual areas prior to discharging into the road system, which discharges into the lake.
Yes, Stuart Smith, Engineer, Community Development. Yes, there are several small retention areas for, for the parcels that you referenced in Springs Plaza that take care of their water quality.
And they're through dry detention first?
Yes, yes, definitely.
Where would that be, in there? I don't remember.
Well, around the Jiffy Lube area, there are several low depressions that are dry retention areas. Okay, I know for certain there, I believe it's just north of Jiffy Lube, there's one. But they're all independent dry retention areas, provide water quality for their commercial developments.
Okay.
Okay?
I guess, I just have questions because it's confusing to me if this was part of the original Springs Plaza development back in the 80s, and now we're modifying it. I just don't want us to be overlooking.
Well, the permitting wasn't done as part of the original DRI. It was part of the DRI, as I indicated, they took, stole the fill off the property, and then let it go into foreclosure, and I won't bore you, but they dumped a lot of other obligations on it, and then left it go. It was permitted by the bank who took it in foreclosure, and that's, and then sold, and that's when this work was done. So this work was not done as part of the original, Spring Plaza was done after the site plan was modified by Huntington.
So at one time, this property, both parcels were owned under one common ownership at the time of the DRI, is that correct?
Yes, so Mr. Bud and a Mr. James Humphrey did the permitting for this, I want to say '81, '82.
Mm-hmm.
But then the north part was developed, and then they let the south go into foreclosure. One of the things I want to point out, and or ask Brent, Brent, Ms. Barnes Buchanan has some questions about the change from commercial to residential, but what's the open space requirement for commercial?
For?
Thirty percent, correct?
For the, you're talking about for Benita Springs?
Just, just.
Okay, yes. Yes, thirty percent, sorry.
And for residential, it's forty percent, correct?
Yes.
So by virtue of changing that part from commercial to industrial, we're required to increase the percentage of open space.
Correct. And I can, I can confirm that the area of detention that we, that we're manipulating for this portion of it was specifically designed for the property that we are, we are in charge of. And again, the Water Management District would confirm the same. So, and if we do have any additional impacts, we would provide more dry detention on site if we need, if need be, because of our development.
Thank you.
Anything further? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next one, Ms.?
We don't have any further testimony at this time. Mr. State School is here. I would note that on page, I think it's 19 of the staff report, that they did indicate that, well, Mr. Banks isn't here, but the FDOT, as well as the local transportation folks, did review Mr. Banks's traffic impact statement. I don't believe there's any questions or problems with that, so I just wanted to kind of refresh your memories on that. And if you don't have any other questions, we would deserve the right for rebuttal at this point.
We usually take a break at 11. You want to do it now before we start the?
Okay.
Any objection to that?
Yes, sir, appreciate it.
No, that's good.
Let's take a quick five minutes?
Yeah.
Will that be enough for everybody? Okay.
Thank you.